Okay, good evening. Today is March 31st, 2016. It's the meeting of High Park Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to enter Executive Session for discuss confidential matters pertaining to employment, future employment of particular persons? Please. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're now in Executive Session. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. May I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're back in open session at this time. Have the pleasure of meeting. There are no agenda modifications. Do I have a motion to stop the event tonight?
So moved. Second.
A discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I bring this point.
Yes, and Garrett is busy with schoolwork tonight. So he sent me an email so I could fill in for him. That is a nice treat to have Garrett around. So, of course, we were on spring break, but the softball team was down in Myrtle Beach, and the girls won two games and lost one. And the baseball team was also down in Myrtle Beach, and they lost. They won three, lost two, and tied one. Couple of standouts. Michaela DeMore went eight-for-12 to help win the girls' FDR softball games. And Alyssa Pitcher had 10 strikeouts in the last game. So that was impressive. Everything went well on the...on both trips. One minor, well, not a minor injury on the baseball trip, but all went well, and the parents were there. We had some really excellent news today, not today, this week. We were notified by the New York State Scholar-Athlete Association that our gymnastics team received the highest grade point average in New York State. And the New York State Scholar-Athlete Association will be coming to a board meeting to present the team with a banner. So this is the first time, in anybody's knowledge, that any of our teams have received this state recognition. So I believe it's the April 26th meeting. The people from the state will come down and publicly present the gymnastics team with that banner. They had a phenomenal year with a number of students going to states that...four students at states we haven't seen that in a while. And obviously, the entire team is responsible for coming in with a grade point average that put them at the highest grade point average for gymnastics teams across New York State. So we'll save some of the celebration for when they are here. And Garrett wanted me to also mention the FDR Relay for Life is coming up on May 1st. That is also the same day as the district-wide arts festival. So there will be multiple things to do that day in the district on May 1st. And tomorrow night is Mr. President at FDR High School. That's a kind of tongue-in-chief spoofy competition that the senior members of our graduating class have traditionally done for a number of years. It's quite entertaining, but I don't think many parents are encouraged to go.
It's tomorrow?
Yeah.
And April 1st.
Yeah, April 1st.
If you do go, you won't get the jollies.
And I don't know if anyone has any.
Yeah, nobody else has any. It's kind of a pleasant week off, right? Even for us.
Especially for some of us. Go nowhere.
You just jinx them.
Not a cheer.
Anyway, I bring this to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that with the crumelmo closing... crumelmo closing, which will begin on Monday, 300 letters were sent directly to the families whose bus routes were changed. As George had mentioned at one time, we have 106 times a day that a bus would travel over that section of crumelmo. All of the rerouting process is completed. Every family has been notified and received a letter, including their revised bus schedules and times. So I'm sure that with any closing of this nature, we will see some minor complications. We appreciate any patience, but we have done everything on our end that we could do to anticipate what the new schedules would be and to notify people of those schedules. So we're confident that we're ready and confident that there's always a curve hole somewhere in there when you deal with major construction. And just a reminder that the most likely-to-succeed film screening is scheduled for April 11th. That is a 90-minute film that features High Tech High in California and explores what the future of education can look like or might look like when you're looking at being college and career-ready for the types of careers that are out there. So the film will be at the Wallace Center from 6:30 to 8:30. People from the community are invited to view the film and stay for a discussion. Thanks to Lucille, who's here with us tonight. She got this all organized. And tickets are available through the link on the flyer, which can be found on the website. We have 25 tickets available. As of right now, 81 of them have been taken. So if you would like to attend the film, Most Likely to Succeed, you should go on and click on the link on the flyer and secure your ticket. Tickets are free. It's a free event, but there's limited seating at the Wallace Center. And I will say, we are pleased. This is the highest turnout we've had for a kind of a peek at the academic future. And I think it just must be that it's timely and high interest to have clearly a week before 81 tickets sold.
Yeah, I think I would just point out to the public that it's not a high school that's using technology. It's a technology-based high school that has innovative programs that are completely different than what you're used to. It's not just the same stuff, just using more technology. It's a entirely new approach to teaching. I hope that we read a good description of it. I always think you'll be amazed and want to say, "Why don't we have that?" when you see it. How are you doing?
I think that's it.
That's it? Well, move right into the energy program update.
Good evening. This is the mid-year report for the third performance year of the energy program. So this is all the data from August through January of this year. This is where we are in the program this third year. So halfway through the third year, we have saved $61,099, and that leaves us at 18.9% for just this year. And that's not the whole program, just the first half of the third year. This breaks down the expected savings, so that you can see the top numbers. The expected energy cost will be expected to spend this year based on weather, based on current unit costs, based on how the buildings perform, and the actual costs of what we did spend. That first number, the expected energy cost, if you remember, is derived from using the baseline data that we have for the base year and adjusting it to today's conditions. So you see the difference is the $61,099. This is just a chart that compares the first halves of all the performance years so far, so you can see how we've done in the first half of each year, so you have something to compare it to. You can see that even though this year's savings is $61,000, it looks like less than last year's savings or the first year's savings, but the percentage of the savings compared to what we spent is actually higher. So we're doing even better, getting more things under control. I wanted to talk a little bit about the things that impact the energy usage, because even though we're saving money, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that that money does not come from the fact that fuel costs are a lot lower this year than they used to be, or the fact that this year was 40% warmer than it was last year, or 40% warmer than the base year, 50% warmer than last year. So even though it was a lot warmer, that was taken into account, and adjustments were made in the data for the weather, so that this program does not take credit for lower fuel, warmer weather, things like that. So the savings are actually just the avoided utility costs that we've gotten from changing our behavior or changing schedules of how things run. Some other things that impact the data and our usage are building systems. In a lot of our buildings, they're older buildings, the systems are older, some of them are original to the building. And you've already, you know that the pneumatic systems are failing district-wide. So this year, it's become even more apparent than it has in past years. It's little by little, each year, there's been more and more failures. And this year, in particular, there's been some pretty big failures at Roper Smith and North Park and FDR, to the point where we have a lot of steam leaks, we have a lot of air leaks, and it causes a lot of overheating. It prevents our buildings from being able to set back. Some of the only ways we can set back the building are to completely disable the heating plant during unoccupied times. But you have to be careful doing that. It has to, you know, you have to watch the weather, you have to watch the equipment, you have to watch the temperature of the building. It's not something that can be done all the time or be done haphazardly. So a lot of our buildings have issues, and we can't necessarily garner the savings that we should because of these systems. And that impacts our data, because even though we set the schedules for what we think they should be, and we expect the building to set back during unoccupied times, it may not do that, because when these systems fail, they fail on to protect the building. So it may run because of systems failure. And that causes us to use a lot more oil and a lot more electricity than we should.
Could you define occupied? That when there's no students there, or that when there's no maintenance people, when there's no custodial people?
That's unoccupied. That's unoccupied. Occupied is when there's students and staff in the building.
Right, but you talked about unoccupied time, when there were things set back. You know, if you were doing it after school hour, it would still custodians there.
Right, and it depends. Each building is different in the way that it operates and the way that it sets back. So a building that's smaller, has a lot of exterior areas, it's going to coast down and cool off quickly. So the schedules in those buildings may go longer than the schedules in another building, but it takes a really long time to coast down. So even when we say we set back the building, or it goes unoccupied, it may go unoccupied at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, depending on the activities in that building, but it won't reach below, you know, mid-60s until 11:00 or after. It just depends on what the area of the building, how long it takes to coast down.
Okay. The reason I ask is I'm concerned with working condition for custodians, especially that handling hazardous materials, doing, you know, stripping wax, there's lots of fumes, the building systems are shut down. I want to know what effect that's having on this half.
Well, custodians have asked that we keep fans running longer, so they tell us how long they need them. So exhaust fans run longer in the buildings than maybe other systems in the buildings. And in the bigger buildings, the exhaust fans can be turned on and off manually, so that if they need to turn an exhaust fan on to do those things, they do that. I also wanted to point out, I wanted to make note, that even though it looks like we're probably, we are saving over, probably, you know, by the end of the year, $200,000 or more in fuel costs in that fuel code, not spending that. It's not...it's money that...it's saving. We budgeted it, and we're not spending it, but that's not...I don't take credit for that savings. That's, you know, because of lower fuel costs, we're able to put that money into other things. So I just want to make sure that you know that, you know, we're not taking credit for that money that's not being spent out of the fuel codes. This is just, we're revisiting this graph that you've seen before. Just to point out, you know, we're closer to getting that savings, the big net savings, after we're out of contract with Synergistic, because right now, we pay Synergistic for their consulting and their training for the next year and a half. So after another year and a half, you'll see that the net savings increases dramatically with this program, and you still continue to receive all that support from Synergistic. So this is the energy savings to date. This is for the life of the program, 30 months. It's $452,000, so we're coming close to that half a million. Add 17% for the whole program. So it seems to be growing gradually and steadily, so we're really happy with that. I also wanted to mention that we've asked the district, different departments in this building and administration for their feedback on the program, and how we think it's working and how it's impacting their work. And the feedback that we received was overwhelmingly positive. I actually expected more complaints from people, because we're asking people to change the behavior and how they do things, and that's not always easy. But the feedback from everyone was very positive. A lot of people said that it either hasn't changed how they do their work. Some of the quotes that we received were, "The energy program has changed my work by making me more aware of ways to save energy." "It has been very easy to follow the recommendations of the program." "It makes me look to see what can be unplugged over a long weekend." "It's great." Some of the critical feedback that we received that has really helped me know where to spend more of my energy is that, all in all, I still wish we had more of an educational piece tied to this. And I've heard that from other people, that they wish there was more education to the staff and students. So now that we're into the third year, I hope that even though, you know, it's a part-time program, that I can spend more time in the schools. And I know it's hard with testing and all the stuff at the end of the year, but it's something that we're striving towards. And then the other, the other part of the feedback is that people wish they knew more of the results, more of the data sharing, the numbers. They want to hear more of that specifically. And even though we put it on the website and have the presentations, I think that people need to know what the program's doing, so that they know that it's working, what they're doing actually matters. So I need to do better with sharing the results, so that's something that we're going to do And then these are your environmental savings. This is for life of the program. So you can see that even for the 30 months of the program, the hard savings from having the program in the buildings saves, say, 323 passing cars from being taken off the road for a year. Well, a portion of that, like, I think it's just over 100, 110, is just from this part of the performance year. So we're doing really well, and it's, you know, due to everybody participating, the entire district, everybody works here, everybody...
As far as getting, making it more aware, it just occurred to me that you could almost start a little competition, if you had in each building what the savings were to date. And since we're all doing the same kind of energy, you know, reductions, maybe a competition between the building, my building does this, and we're at some percentage, happy percentage of, we're all doing the same building, but just about.
Okay, Jill, some of these questions I'm asking because I wasn't able to make the energy reading, so probably a good answer in there, and I apologize for that. The expected energy cost, again, when do you come up with that number for the year? Come up with it early on in August?
That's...no, it's month-to-month. So if I say, you know, I want a report of the data for August to January, it takes that amount of data, it takes the same billing periods from the base year and adjusts them for today's conditions, so we have an expected energy cost for those specific billing periods.
Okay. Okay. The other thing here is, on your analyst, it says it's $300,000 for the third year of this year. Are the first year and second year based on August through January also?
Yes, that's the first half of all those performance years.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, got a question on the, let's see, I'm going to page here. On the base cost, you've got school year 12 to 13. Can I find where I saw it? I'm just wondering why you go back that far?
Well, the program started in 2013. So they took two years' worth of base year data to make sure that they have solid base year. And if you remember, we had to adjust the baseline because of the issue with Havland, with how much water and heat they lost. So that's why they went back two years. But the baseline is the entire year before the program started. So the program started in July 2013, so the first performance year started August 2013.
Okay, is Havland part of this, this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because last year, we kind of took it out because of the work that was going on.
Just until we made the adjustments in the baseline. Yeah.
Does it? Refresh my memory, what's our payment to Synergistics?
Um, I'm not sure that Linda would have that information.
Because that's going to, we've got about another year and a half of those payments, and then all of that will become net savings.
We pay $126,000 a year to Synergistic.
So roughly $10,000 a month?
Okay.
I did find that number, Jill. It's in the changing the impact, energy issue that comes back. Particularly, I was interested in the electrical base year, 2012 was 10 cents kilowatt-hour, and the current year is 11 cents kilowatt-hour. Temper change, that's not too bad, really, over that period of time.
No, the electric has been pretty steady.
What's that good Central Hudson company? Now I'm all watching. Watch the market, too.
Well, the cost, I mean, I don't want to say savings, but the steadiness of normal increases, besides your program with lighting in particular, as far as electrical part of it goes, has really shown an impact. No question about it. It's harder people to gauge the fuel and the natural gas because of weather, so it's not usually, you know, the prices are so low.
And that's why I wanted to make it clear exactly where it comes from and where it doesn't come from, so that there's no misconceptions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I bring this to budget. The reason why we're confirming, we may have skipped a subject, so...
Yeah, it should be listed, but it wasn't in...
I apologize.
It wasn't in bold print, but I said I would give an update on concession stand, and later on in the agenda is the resolution to create the position of concession stand manager. So I wanted to give an official update on where we are now and remind everybody that this is still brand-new. We will continue to reevaluate this. In fact, the job description for the concession stand manager says we'll review this at the end of the year as well, written right into it, so we can take a look at it. But in moving forward, the senior class will be guaranteed three football games inclusive of homecoming. Any additional football games, the proceeds will go to the concession stand will be manned by the varsity club. We typically have three to four football games per season with an occasional fifth. The non-league athletic events, if a booster club or a team that is sponsoring the non-league athletic event wishes to open the concession stand, they can do so and take the proceeds. League events, that is, athletic events that are organized by our athletic league, whether it's Mahal, Section 9, they will be, the concession stand will be run by the varsity club. At the beginning of each year, the annual advisors club meeting will incorporate interest in booster groups, and we can talk about any known but unmanned events, if any. So for example, the Relay for Life is a non-league, non-athletic league event, so the concession stand was open, and it will be split, I believe, by two, one, the varsity club and one booster club. Other interest for elastic games where we don't have the concession stand open, again, that's part of what we want to talk about at the beginning of each year, is let people know what might be available and of interest, so that if there is a club that wants to man the concession stand, they can sign up for that. And we want to keep that process flexible to see how that goes and treat it with equity and fairness. Right now, we don't have people clamoring at this point to run concession stands at certain events. So for example... So for example, last year, the football team hosted a, was it nine-team? I believe it was a nine-team scrimmage and the concession stand wasn't open and the football booster group did not choose to open the concession stand. At that point, that concession stand could go to another group if they wanted to man the stand. Couple of points of clarification that came up. Anytime we have an athletic event, a district-sponsored athletic event, the gate proceeds go into the general fund to help offset the maintenance of the, our facility. So the gate proceeds at an athletic event do not go to the varsity club. They don't go to the athletic department, they go back into the general fund to offset the cost of maintaining the field. The other question that came up is insurance. If it is a district-sponsored event, all the insurance is taken care of by the district. If it is a non-district-sponsored event, the organization has to show proof of their own insurance and has to fill out the building, building facility use form and there is a cost to outside organizations to use our facilities. So again, the feedback that we've received from the senior class is that they are very happy with the guarantee of three football games. They feel that they will be fiscally healthy and be able to maintain the standard of fundraising, especially since the fact that since we've had the new athletic facility, all the proceeds from the football games has increased exponentially. Between that and homecoming, they were confident that having the three football games would keep them at the standard of fundraising. And then things like the Oval Office or any other tournament, if it's run by a team and there's an accompanying booster club, if they want to run the concession stand, they can run the concession stand for an organize. If we are designated to host soccer sectionals, the varsity club will run the concession stand. Again, this will be our first year running through this. The concession stand manager will be responsible for the maintenance of the facility, making sure the concession stand is clean, that cleaning supplies are on hand, you know, basic items. The inventory that they'll be responsible for is just having some basic items, paper towels, cleaning supplies and some paper products. But other than that, whatever group is running the concession stand will be responsible for bringing in all of, all of their items to sell. The board has asked in the past about moving forward with the concession stand being recognized by the state and the Department of Health and we are moving forward with that so that we can officially cook and serve food out inside the facility. As you know, right now, the food is cooked outside of the facility with some wrapped goods being sold across the counter, but the food is cooked outside the facility because it is not a recognized concession stand. And so the process for that has already started. So I think that's the only update we have right now.
So I'm just curious, what classes are losing out? Didn't their other classes have, and other booster clubs? Did the junior class, didn't they come forward and say they had the stand and they know what they're doing?
No, the junior class has basketball. And so no one has, actually, the, no one has really lost anything. The only thing was, I think sometimes the senior class might have had four football games, but when you look back at the finances, pre-facility and post-facility, they're way ahead of the game with three football games.
I just struggle with it, it all goes to varsity club. Really, I do struggle with that whole concept.
What ball goes to varsity club?
That, there are only three, three events go to the senior class.
And one event goes to varsity. And then in the event that we have a league, a sectional, which might be one or two a year, that would go to varsity clubs.
Wait, and there is three home games that go to varsity club, the rest go?
No, no, three.
Three go to the senior class, the rest go to varsity club.
Yeah, which is one, there's only four. And then should we host either sectionals or states for an event, which is not every year, that's for sure, but being an athletic, a district-sponsored athletic league event, that would go to the varsity club.
And how many track meets do we have then, would be at home? Since we, we don't have this before, so.
Right. And the, I don't know how many home track meets. The Oval Office, for example, that would go to the track booster club. And we haven't been opening the concession stand, so we can take a look at, you know, that's one of the things that's open. So we'll take a look at some of the things as they come up.
I would think we should look at it every year and people applying for campus of the stand and it's done fair and equitably.
Exactly, and that's what we want to take this year to look is say, let's look at how does this signup go. So for example, if somebody wanted to, if the varsity club doesn't want to man the, varsity club doesn't, isn't going to be able to man every athletic event, nor have they. So there are a tremendous amount of opportunities for somebody else to say, you know what? There's a soccer game going on this Saturday, we'd like to open the concession stand. There's not, there's going to be plenty of athletic events where anyone could say they wanted to host the concession stand. And what, what we were talking about, just to clarify, Jeff, is big league events. So if we hosted sectionals, the varsity club would, would get that. But for an ongoing, let's say it was a big soccer game or a big track meet, that's.
Why, why do we pick that varsity club is the one that gets? That's my question, why do we pick that varsity is the one?
Because it's part of, they're, part of their organization is a full-time service organization and they raise funds that go directly back to the athletes.
How much of their income is actually going directly back to the athletes versus the big banquet at the end of the year?
Well, actually athletes.
I'm just looking at, and when we look at the track booster club, all of it goes back to some kind of program in the track. So I mean, just curious, how much do we go just to have a banquet?
A majority of it does go to the banquet that has about 500 people in attendance and everybody gets an award. And, you know, again, the, the proceeds from, whether it's a track meet or the Oval Office will bring in a tremendous amount of money to the booster club if they choose to man the concession stand.
I just want to make sure we're equitable and not just all varsity.
Yeah, we're absolutely, nobody, you know, nobody's planning on setting this up to be inequitable. This is a good problem to have, we didn't have a concession stand. People are, clubs have the ability to make hundreds of dollars more than they ever had in the past by having this facility. We have to have some system going into it. So if there's a sectional track meet, varsity club gets it. The Oval Office, which is a huge event, the track boosters get. The, the day-to-day track events or soccer matches, if people want to come and open up this concession stand and make 50 to 100 dollars on selling hot dogs, absolutely.
Then it would be up to the concessions manager to host.
Set a schedule.
Set the schedule and say, okay, we have all these and then open it up to those booster clubs or classes that may want to.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question. Is there really any consideration given to, or maybe I just missed it. What happens if an outside group uses the facility? For example, I believe Mares is supposed to be using the facility for, or not Mares, the CEA.
Well, that's a unique example, that's a trading kind, we've got cool time. But if it's an outside organization that wants to use the facility, they fill out the building use form, which is inclusive of fees to use our facility and they need to provide proof of insurance. And if they would like to open the concession stand, they can open the concession stand and run a concession stand. So if, yeah, I think that's pretty.
That covers it, thank you. Oh, the follow-up question I had. In that event where there is an outside group, but they're not interested in, in running the concession stand, would then one of our groups have the opportunity to run the concessions?
Yes, if, if, if the outside group said they wanted the concession stand open, it could be anticipated, I mean, I can't even imagine, but it could be that an outside group wants the facility and they don't want a concession open.
Or they don't want to do it themselves, so.
But if they, if they want it open and they can't do it themselves, we can then open it up to any. Like, for example, when we have the nine football teams here, the track booster, if we had this system in place and the track booster club wanted to come and run the concession stand, when we had nine football teams here? Yeah, absolutely. We have a number of booster clubs, the football booster club has not been interested thus far in running the concession stand. The varsity club is not a huge club. They, they, they don't have the manpower to say they're going to run everything and take everything. Nobody's signed up for everything yet. We're starting out with one way of organizing it so that the varsity club has a few events, possibly as little as two, maybe up to three. And that the senior class has a guaranteed three. Other than that, everything would go into a signup system where we would make sure if you got this one and, you know, you signed up, somebody else would get the next one. So it, and I just wanted to say thank you, Jeff, for that because it did sound like the varsity club was getting a lot. What we've, what we've basically set up is a system where they get a couple, the senior class gets a couple and then everyone can sign up. Sorry.
Okay. Move on to the budget presentation. We're just warming up, so we'll get up there and we're, you know, we're ready for it now.
Thank you, well, tonight's budget update is really important because the board must adopt the 2016-17 budget at the next meeting. I was just saying that tonight's presentation is very important because the next board meeting is when the.
Can you hold up, Linda? Steve, is that mic on? Sorry, we're really not going to let you get disrupted presentation. It's, it just wasn't coming through the mic now.
Is that better? I hear something. I'm trying to talk louder?
That's better.
So tonight's budget update is really important because the board must adopt the budget at the next meeting, which is April 14th. I'll be really brief, I'm just going to go over the changes since the last presentation. But if any board members have any questions or concerns about the budget, we should address them tonight so we can go into the next meeting with everything clear. This slide here shows the changes from the last presentation, which was given on March 10th. There's actually a decrease to the budget of 199,915 dollars. And we did find, or received some new information. First of all, I recalculated the salaries budget. I always do that right before the final presentation. That resulted in an increase of just 355 dollars. We also received the final OCS admin budget for next year and that came in at 9,653 dollars less than I had originally budgeted. We moved the 1.1 million dollar project for the controls from equipment to transfer to capital funds. We found out that that was an debatable project, so it should be classified as capital. And then we also received new rates for, the final rates for health insurance. The final rates came through at 6.79 percent, I had budgeted at 8 percent. That translates to a savings of 190,617 dollars. Are there any questions about this slide before I move on? This is just the budget to budget comparison. It compares the current budget to the 2015-16 adopted budget. When I presented on March 10th, the budget to budget increase was 2.38 percent, but because of the reductions, it's now 2.15 percent. You will notice that the taxes are increasing only by 129,442 dollars. That is the allowable tax increase amount under the tax cap and it's also the lowest tax levy increase in 40 years. The budget is comprised of three components. We have the program, administrative and capital budgets. The total percentage of each component did change slightly because of the changes that we made from March 10th. The program budget is now 76.74 percent, it had been at 76.71. The admin budget is 9.37 percent of the total budget and it had been 9.41 percent. And the capital budget is now 13.89 percent as opposed to the 13.88 percent.
Linda, coming back up to the budget to budget. It's a 2.15 increase.
Yes.
It just dropped, right?
Yeah, it was 2.38 percent from March 10th.
The 129,442.
That's the same, we haven't changed the tax levy.
Well, I'm thinking if you found money for that and made that a flat zero, how would it change the percentage on the bottom?
Well, we have to.
Brings it under two, right?
Well, the, the budget expenditures must match the revenues.
Yeah, I know that, but I was going to mention bringing something, taking something away from the other side, expenditures. I don't know if it's all on this sheet or not here, but.
Well, we have, we have the tax cap at the levy and the change in the revenue side is in the fund balance appropriation. We decreased that from the last presentation as well.
Okay, so you could increase that to make that a zero, right, on the taxes?
To make the tax levy, increase zero?
Yeah, but that's the dangerous thing to do. That, that will then be the base for next year. So instead of having, under this crazy tax cap plan, you have to budget at whatever your allowable limit is, otherwise it's a downward spiral. The only other way is to go above it and then you need 60 percent. So although zero would look good, it's much better to have your numbers equal what the stage says you can, can do.
Just trying to look out for the taxpayers here in the community. No question about it, so, I mean, if we, if we had to.
Point 22 is a remarkable number.
I don't disagree with that, but, I mean, I don't see it could be a major impact next year. What are we talking, one percentage, one or something?
It depends on what the tax calculation will come through. The CPI for this year was very low, it was less than, or was it, was about 1.12 percent. So if that comes through lower next year, then we might not be able to raise 129,000, even if we leave it in the budget, and that would be even lower if we adjusted it to zero.
Would it come lower or not, it would be kind of scary.
I mean, the government has its tax cap, but there are certain realities within that procedure that forced districts to match it because otherwise you, your, your, subsequent years will be harder and harder to meet your, your budget.
Okay, then there's other, there's other ways to get that down under 2 percent. Even the taxes alone, going to the fund balance appropriation.
Well, it is under two percent. It's under one percent. It's zero point two-two percent is the tax.
Oh, okay. That's what's throwing me off is the, these are just the increases.
Yeah, that's the increase over last year, over the 2015-16 budget, current budget.
So where are we with the levy now?
For the levy, where the increase from 2015-16 is a hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars.
Point two-two percent, huh?
Oh, point two-two.
Right. If, if the revenues are up two percent, but that's because you're picking up, you know, uh, whatever that other, in the other revenue category, but also the state aid's up four point six percent. So the, the, what the taxpayers have to come in, in their pocket for, only point, point two-two percent more.
That's, that's understood in that way.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, I agree. You don't wanna, you don't wanna tinker with that. The other thing, you know what, you don't wanna make that a zero either because with equalization rates and, um, the, the confusion that ensues with that and the hilarity that, you know, I use that tongue in cheek, that ensues with that, you will tout a zero percent tax increase and somebody, more than somebody's tax bill will go up and say, "You told me it was zero percent, but my tax bill went up." Well, yeah, because the equalization rate changed, or, you know, something's changed.
Similar to a couple years ago with the other town.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that's, you almost never want a zero because, you know, we, you go trumpet from the, the hilltops that, "Hey, we're coming in with a zero percent tax increase," and somebody ends up paying more and they're not happy about it, so.
Yeah, we, this year we found more, um, budget areas in the other revenues. That's why that increase is so high. But that's, um, when we looked at the budget and made sure that we were budgeting, um, for what we would actually receive. We were with such a low tax cap, this year we were lucky that we were able to fund it with other revenues, or know that we have other revenue source.
Okay, now we got it.
Now that we're on the topic, I just would like to say something to the, today is the last day of the fiscal year for New York State. I've been looking to see if the budget has passed. No budget.
Yeah, they need to lay the fool's face.
But there is a possibility, a very good possibility, that the aid, um, across the state for all schools will be increased. So that will be reflected in the final proposed budget that we present at the next meeting.
If we get a budget by the next meeting.
Are you good to move on?
Yes, yeah, thanks.
Sure. Anyway, um, the next three slides after this are the detail of the components. I won't go through, um, through all that unless the board would like to come back to it after the presentation. Here we have the program budget. You can see it's seventy-six point seven four percent of the total budget. The administrative budget is nine point three seven percent of the total budget. And the capital budget is thirteen point eight nine percent of the total. I'm actually going to skip this slide and come back to it after. I wanna go over the budgetary savings first. We've discussed most everything that's on here in previous, um, presentations. However, we do have one change. Um, under salaries, about halfway down the page, you'll notice that we've changed the, um, the reduction of the teaching assistance from two to three. We are out of compliance in E and L. We actually have, we are not allowed to have TA provide services. So we will be removing that from the budget and the reduction will be based on seniority. Are there any questions about that?
Now, isn't I upset with the hiring? Are we hiring an E and L teacher to provide those services?
Here on the budgetary additions sheet, there's the, um, hiring of an E and L teacher. It's not quite halfway down the page. That's something that we had talked about, I think, in the first budget presentation. And also on this, um, budgetary additions sheet, we're actually, um, showing a change in three TAs, the behavioral TAs. That's to, um, well, the intent is to have a TA in each of the eight-one-two classes at Netherwood be trained in de-escalation. So that's, other than one, um, one other thing I had to talk about, that's, that's for the changes from the last meeting. And we do have to talk about the one hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. Before we get to that, are there any questions about the rest of the budget? Any concerns?
Now, the, the math teacher they asked teachers, that's, that's the hire that's replacing the three TAs, right? There were three TAs to provide those services. Now we're going to a teacher.
I think, there was two TAs. That's to replace the two TAs that we had talked about in, in previous budget. Okay. Um, the other thing that we do need to talk about is on the last line here, it's the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. Um, we are allowed to have one project each year that's paid for with cash, up to a hundred thousand dollars, for which we would receive the full aid amount in the following year. However, um, we've just recently found out that the FDR elevator project, that we identified as that project, would come through at more than a hundred thousand, so we can't leave that in the budget. Um, the board does have some choices. Elliot will speak to some substitute projects that we could add if the board would like to do that.
Or just take it out.
Or we could just take it out and just decrease the budget by a hundred thousand. But the decision does have to be made tonight.
I'm in favor of hearing other options.
Yeah, the, the, the other, the other nuance is that if you left the hundred thousand dollar elevator project in, you would get state aid, but not the next year. It would be over fifteen years, so it's not, it doesn't make sense to do that. The whole point in doing that hundred thousand dollar shovel-ready project is to generate the aid the following year, so.
And we can't submit a project that we know will be over a hundred thousand.
So we.
Do we know, what was the estimated cost?
One fifty, no, which is, you know, with, once you submit it, you know, the, the architect fees and everything, so. So we asked Elliot, knowing that, you know, we had a couple choices, take, take it out entirely or find another shovel-ready project that you know will come in under a hundred, so he's got a couple that cheers from, if, if you wanna hear them, or.
I'd like to hear them.
Okay.
Is there anything that, um, the board would like, add, like ask me before Elliot comes up?
It looks like no. Thank you. As usual, welcome.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Got my notes on my phone if you want to pull it up. So, we, we did, uh, we did the game. This information came to us in the last couple of days in terms of, uh, you know, what we thought would be, you know, possible overage, nobody knew. It turns out it's impossible overage, changes the game completely. And so, uh, in looking at the drip and, and of the existing master facilities plan, it seems to make a lot more sense to build up to the budget number than try to shoehorn a project into the budget number. So, um, we're looking at ideas that are more piecemeal. Like, uh, very similar to how we're doing this one point one million in the controls. It's a summation of little projects that adds up to that number. Uh, we've got exterior doors that are due for replacement in multiple buildings. Uh, we have multiple buildings listed.
Oh, it's pointing at that door out there.
That one up there? Yeah, that's one of them. But, but door replacement and safety issue is one of those things where each door, obviously, is not gonna get us to a hundred thousand, but we would calculate it and budget up to that number. Try to do things on state contract, eliminate the need for bid so you don't get blindsided by cost numbers. Um, we have multiple buildings that need bathroom renovations, fixtures that are failing, uh, where we can really piece together a project. So I think what, what we learned from this experience is what can we add up to, to get us to the budget number, where we can kind of get it up, and then if we get a little too high, we can dial it back before we submit to make sure we're under the number. Uh, intrusion alarm upgrades at FDR or Havland, there's things that can be added to those systems where it's a capital project, but it could be pieced up to that number. These are all things I can do on state contract.
Of course, I don't know how much a bathroom costs. That's probably a lot of money, but.
It depends on whether or not you're going to redesign it or just, um, renovate it.
I mean, 'cause I just, just thinking out loud because, you know, we certainly tackled the Havland and Natalie High Park elementary bathrooms. The high school, main lobby bathrooms are ridiculous. I mean, we redid that, we renovated that lobby, we fixed it up, we make it look nice. And, well, originally we're, I mean, when I went to high school, they were faculty bathrooms, so they were under lock and key, except when guests were in the building. They're, they're an embarrassment. They're, they're, they're just, they, they, they need an overhaul. I mean, that's, you know, that's the showcase building as far as, you know, events and whatnot. And, you know, so you go from this beautiful auditorium that we put a lot of money in, every year staff did a great job with the painting. I mean, it looks great. And then the outside work that we did in the lobby looks great. And then you have to go use the restroom and you walk back into nineteen sixty-five, and it's just disgusting. Something needs to be done with that.
It's one of those things where I, you know, I mean, most of you guys are familiar with, even in your own home, right? You, you pick your sink, you pick your, your fixtures, we can pick the tiles. So, so I'm looking at projects and now and in the future, when we look at the hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project, we're gonna be looking at things that, that can be piecemealed and built up to our budget number to make sure we stay under that threshold so we get that aid back.
Well, what he just mentioned about the two bathrooms. You confident that could fit under that threshold?
At least the ladies room.
Well, since I report directly to, uh, Dr. Reich, I would do the ladies room first.
That's a real good point that you made, kind of, I mean, I.
I don't disagree. I've been looking at, and, and honestly, this is something that brought marine brought to my attention when I first got here. And it's because of the nature of what it is, that it's capital work, and it's like, well, if we have another project, tie it to, maybe, and this could be an opportunity to do something like that. If, if the board, uh, as a group decides that that's where we should go, I can certainly put some numbers together and the reality is, could we do it front of the budget number? We could do something in front of the budget number and, and the scope would reflect the budget.
I think it's a good idea.
Other, any other, I mean, we have a lot of other things like, uh, chemistry labs.
It's only a hundred thousand.
Yeah, the, the properties. I mean, that, you know, fixing, um, the drainage or, you know.
A good portion of things that we can do that involve things with plumbing, electrical work, trigger code compliance issues, where we're currently grandfather, but if you touch any little piece of this, it requires a code compliance project for the whole thing. And usually, there's gonna be a big cost in, in that redesign piece.
How about, how about from a health and safety standpoint? Looking at your priorities. I mean, everybody likes to have nice bathrooms, but do we have any health and safety or access issues that need to be, uh?
Access issues, no. We currently, our, our handicap lifts are operational. They can cost, one lift can cost easily, uh, seven. At Ralph Orsmith, we spent seventy thousand dollars, uh, on the switchback lift there. The other ones we have are still functional, uh, and I'm a little hesitant to jump on those right away because what we have works and the new ones, I'm not thrilled with what I've seen so far. Uh, as far as safety goes, I thought of the alarm project as a possibility. It's hard to sell security stuff when you're the ninth safest city in the state, uh, or town in the state. And it's not an immediate issue, but those are due, and I, I really, as much as we could piecemeal upgrade them, I'd prefer to wait for a larger scale project where a full redesign could really be implemented to give us other benefits to a systematic, uh, rebuild. Plus, um, security items in general are also fundable from other sources like the, uh.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much security as I was, uh, you know, health and safety.
Yeah, well, I, I'd like to say we're in pretty good shape right now.
Fennel, Asian, water.
I think some of the, some of the mentions, project you mentioned are probably on your drip list to do already, right?
Certainly. I mean, we talked about exterior doors, so I can do four or five doors at a time, or we can do twenty doors.
I know that, the amount that we appropriated last month, whatever it was.
Yes, uh, there were some doors as part of that. Um, we're doing a small bathroom at the bus garage, uh, two small bathrooms with that, but that's one stall, one sink. You know, these are gang bathrooms that, uh, Mr. Sheen is referring to.
Right.
That'd be a little bit more. Certainly, I mean, this, this just scales up what I can do, uh, and I, and I can bring in contractors to get it done pretty quickly, so.
Do we need to know what items are before the budget?
I believe before the board accepts the budget.
We can't leave, uh, a hundred thousand dollars, they, um.
I'll default to this time.
No, we can't do that.
No, that's something I don't know about.
Has to be, uh, okay, well, I guess we're, uh, down.
And, um, Perry, you mentioned water, and, um, water is something that we're being proactive with everything that's going on, getting some additional testing. Elliot's working with Morris Associates and, uh, since you've mentioned water, one of the other things that's coming up that we'll have to look at in the near future is, um, North Park. We have, the water is fine, but there's a testing requirement and, um, you know, it's a difference between the county taking care of it and them, then saying, "Now, we have to take care of it." And so you'll be hearing more about that because the waiver's going to end in December, and then if you need to build a hut to test the water on our own, so, but we don't have enough time to say.
Yeah, do we, do we treat water at, uh?
We, we currently don't treat North Park's water because of the quality of the water. We have to re-replace.
The counter, the county that's renewed and.
Right, we, what would used to be a three-year renewable, uh, they reduced the term. They said, "We were giving you one year because we're going to stop giving waivers."
Yeah.
As a rule, has nothing to do with the quality of our water.
Right.
Um, but in order to comply with the regulations with the loss of that waiver, we have to build stuff and install equipment that, uh, requires it to go to SED for approval just because it's affecting a vulnerable water system, it's part of the requirements. So, we'll, we'll come back and probably, maybe, you know, next fiscal year, we'll talk about how.
Well, does any of this have to go to SED for approval? Anything of a hundred thousand is gonna have to go to SED for approval.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, we, this is all just happening now, so we don't really have enough information, but we might be back if we don't get our waiver extended or when we send it to SED if the waiver isn't extended. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Could be next year's hundred thousand dollar project.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's.
That's one of the reasons to do it is because it, it, it's rural.
Right.
Do it this year, next year you're getting aid for it, uh, for, for what you did this year. It makes it a little more valuable.
That's certainly what I'm anticipating.
Getting first year done is, is the toughest one.
Am I mistaken, or was, was, hasn't there been talk in the papers about, uh, quantities of money being provided for testing with this lead issue amongst the old buildings throughout the nation?
I will tactfully say that I don't know officially, but in discussion with colleagues and architects and engineering firms around the state, there's been so much attention paid to water quality that should there be a need, there is a widespread sentiment that the state may create some sort of funding source. Traditionally, a lot of the things that people are concerned about pertain to the infrastructure of how water moves through a building.
Right.
And, and so any remediation would require massive construction overhauls across seven hundred districts in the state, so it's no small feat. And, uh, I was speaking to an architect just today that was sharing with me that, uh, it's very possible that that would happen, but a lot of folks are, are starting to do what we've already begun doing, and that's just testing on your own when you know you don't have a concern, to make sure that you don't get put in a position where you do have a concern and you have to be reactive.
I made a, I was, I was made aware of a rather dubious problem in my own house. I had a three-inch pipe carrying the water out of the house that, uh, was being eaten away from the inside because of the acidity of the water. And I've seen it drip, drip, and when I put my finger over to see where it was dripping, I put my finger right through a three-inch soil pipe. I'm just wondering now what the shape of my stomach's in. If it's a good thing we don't drink the water in the house.
If you remember a few years ago, Mr. Duffy, that's what we had, Havland, those supply lines going under the bucket line. Same situation. When water's kind of, over time, it can be pretty rough.
I thought it only happened to car radiators.
So, will you send us a list prior to next meeting so we, we're up to speed on to what we might be discussing?
Uh, certainly. I don't know, Lynda, do you know what timeframe we need to, like, will you, you have to make that list?
So we can. We need to find a budget, right?
Yeah, the, um, the final, the, the proposed budget will be in the, in the next agenda, so it'll have to be included in that. We'll have to identify it.
All we have to do is identify, the money's there. We'll leave it alone. Just identify where a hundred thousand coming.
Yes.
Swap out elevator for whatever.
Yeah, I can send you a half dozen topics that we talked about tonight for your review and discussion. I don't know how we get that.
Now, were you saying that a hundred thousand still has to be reviewed by SED?
A project will have to be reviewed, yes.
Project, but you have to send them detail?
Um, it depends on what we do. If it's something that's kind of.
Well, you better consider that also then. It depends on what you do.
Well, I'm, in, in the budget, we have submission and, and stamp drawings and all that as part of the consideration. It's if we do something that's small and piecemeal that adds up, it's just a smaller package that goes to the state, but we would certainly send anything.
I'm just saying, staying away from designers, architect, and engineer design.
And that's kind of when, when Mr. Dieter said that, that's kind of where we're trying to stay away from any systematic redesign. We're trying to do very low-hanging fruit, things that are nagging and very obvious and very easy to obtain, especially for our first project.
Anybody else?
So, we didn't make a decision.
But we're gonna get a list.
You're gonna get a list and then we'll figure it out somehow before the next meeting?
With, with numbers, right?
Well, the numbers are.
We're gonna leave the number here.
I'll get it to them.
I know if there's multiple things that you want on there. I'd like to know if it actually meet.
Well.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious about how this dialogue is gonna take place, not in public.
Here's what I think is, I think, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking. Here's what I think is, I think, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about work. I'd like to hear from Elliot his recommendation of what, where he recommends that a hundred thousand dollar be allocated.
I just presume it would be more than one project.
I'd love it to be, but I'd, it makes more sense.
Hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money, you'd think. Now, when you're paying your daily wage.
It can only be one project according to that.
Yeah, I'd say you can land.
It can only be one project.
It can only be one project, okay.
That's why I think if we do the doors, we can only do it at one building because we get a different project number for each building.
You can get a district wide project number, but I don't know if it has to be every building at that point or multiples. But, you know, we can, and it doesn't have to be a full hundred thousand. If we only come up to sixty five thousand, that's where we are. That's what the project is. And that's the amount that we expense. I mean, realistically, the bathrooms would be a great idea because there's not a lot of other ways to do it. Unless we're going to wait for a massive high school renovation project years and years from now where we can lump it in. It's kind of, it's something that's been petitioned by more than one person. I could say exterior doors would be great, but I don't know that I could do enough at Roosevelt, let's say, to come close to that hundred thousand number. It would be more of a district wide number. So of the things we discussed, it seems to be something that's pretty straightforward that we can work on. We're not far enough along with the water topic to be able to commit to that at this point. That would very well be next year's project. So the bathroom seems to make sense to me. If we save bathroom renovations at FDR High School and I can do those auditorium lobby ones for fifty thousand, we can do another student bathroom, we can do a faculty bathroom. There's enough bathrooms in that building where I could spend a hundred thousand dollars easily.
Yeah, the athletic bathroom.
The outside athletic bathrooms, exactly. That's.
Yeah, that's a good idea because it's scalable as well. Even when you go out to bid for it, you can do alternates so that you can build up to that number and capitalize on it or down.
So are we in agreement that we're going to put in on that line item?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
I can support that.
Bathrooms at Roosevelt High School, bathroom renovations?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a go.
Linda, is there anything else we need to follow here? Okay, glad I could help.
Is that the last slide for me?
It is the last slide.
Okay.
Is there anything else that the board wants to discuss? I don't even know.
Okay, never mind.
This slide just shows the rest of the timeline. So on April fourteenth, the board has to adjourn the budget and the budget hearing is on May tenth.
Thank you, Linda. I'm just looking at the calendar there real quick. That May seventeenth, right? That's Tuesday, is that? That's because we have to do the Bozies budget, right? That night, is that one or two days?
No, May seventeen is the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking April, never mind. That's right. That's right. That's Tuesday. And so we're not having the meeting when?
We're having the meeting Tuesday, Thursday.
Right, okay, gotcha.
And this is their May tenth budget hearing, which is a Tuesday, right?
Right, that's a Tuesday.
And we won't have a budget meeting that Thursday.
Right.
So it's the budget hearing end of the board meeting.
Gotcha. I remember we did some stuff for Tuesdays and I was just trying to get that scraped out of my head.
On Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
Okay, moving on. At this time, I have a motion to enter a couple of questions.
So move, second.
Any discussion? Anybody want to address the board?
Everybody, Denise Theory. I have two things, so if you could bear with me. I would like to just talk about you very separate things. So the first one, I'm going to say rather quickly. Just because it came up with the discussion, the concession stand in the varsity club and with everything that's going on with there. Because they're being given the opportunity to fundraise for the sectionals events and the league events and all, I understand the need for them to fundraise. I understand the need that they don't have a lot of, they're not meeting their budgets for their event. So I understand that. And that being said, we have some lines that are drawn and all that. But I just want to mention that if they have the event, the opportunity to fundraise for these events, like the track mahals that happened last year, the track booster was poached last year because, well, first we were misled. But then we were told that we didn't have the mahals for fundraising. That was okay. But then we were asked to do it anyway, but to give all the proceeds to varsity club because they were incapable of manning the concession stand for that large event. I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. If varsity club can't do an event, it's not okay to them go to the other clubs or the other districts and ask them to do their fundraising for them. And I just want to point out too that that wasn't, we weren't approached by varsity club. We were approached by the athletic director to do that, which was, I think, inappropriate. So in the event that varsity club, you know, can't, doesn't have the ability to do concessions for such a large event, they can ask for help and we can do something cooperatively. We've been trying to work together with other booster clubs to do things cooperatively and to share events and to, and to help each other out. We're happy to do that type of thing, but we can't, we can't do things for each other only. And I just want that out there. So that's the varsity club issue that I just wanted to point out. The other thing I really wanted to say is I really wanted to thank the district for the opportunity that it gave to the American Studies kids to go to Washington this past week. It was not only a great experience and always is a great experience to go to the Capitol in such a way and to walk through the Capitol and to meet with our senators. Senator Gillibrand was particularly gracious to our students and her office was welcoming and really gave them VIP treatment and really took care of them. It was a great experience for them to talk to the interns and talk with the senator and to get that kind of vantage point, you know, at our Capitol and with our government. But this was particularly a really great event because, because of the particular situation of one of the students having a family member that is the Secretary of Homeland Security, they got the opportunity to almost yuck it up a little bit with one of the most powerful people in this country. And they talked to him about all kinds of things and he treated them so well. And he, he talked to them on their level and above their, you know, with them about Syrian refugees, about immigration, about national security, about his conversations with the president, you know, and just all kinds of stuff. It was truly life changing for some of these students. So I really just wanted to thank you for that opportunity because it was truly unbelievable. Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the board?
I've got scrum everywhere, so give me. Hi, my name is Bobby Goodman. I do have a couple of different things to talk about. After listening to the last page in the discussion about the hundred thousand dollars and what to do with it, that really points out to me how much I miss facility steering form. Because if we had facilities steering form, we may have already had that all resolved before you guys got here tonight. So that was a really good group and we had many projects that we talked about with the community members, with board members. So, you know, maybe we can get that back at some point where we won't have to be jockeying at the last minute to decide how to spend a hundred thousand dollars. I'm really glad to hear that it could go to FDR though because Havlin looks great. I'm waiting for our top of the building there to look great too. Okay. So then my other point is about the, how, I just want to speak again against the forty five hundred dollars for the concession stand manager. When we put the bond up for the athletic facility, we told the public that it would only cost them sixteen dollars a year or whatever it was after, you know, because of the bond, it was sixty cents on the dollar and we weren't going to be taking money from your taxpayer money. And now we are. Now we're asking for more money. The first budget went up right afterwards. We got a point five facility person to take care of that facility. Now we're asking for a forty five hundred dollar stipend to take care of a donated building. And then we want to look into putting a stove in it and the additional expense of board of health approval. This is all taxpayer money that we told them they would not be paying. You know, we had, that was the year the school closed. We had to teach people the difference between the school budget and the bond. It was hard. We had a lot of community members trying to tell people what it was. And now we are going back on what we said. As far as the scheduling, I'm great with everybody sharing the wealth and doing what we have to do, but I think it should be a community group or something, some kind of committee that volunteers to people to work out and sit down from boosters and varsity club and the athletic director, she needs to be involved. The thing about the community events, there is no calendar anywhere that anybody knows any community events. The football game that you talked about where these nine teams came, unless you're part of football, you didn't know that. So you wouldn't know to go try to get that. And not that I want any more concession stands than I already have. I'm not speaking on my, for me or track boosters, I'm just saying in general, there is not a community calendar for music parents or theater parents or anybody else, PTA, whoever, to tennis, whatever, to come and do an event. No one knows what's going on unless you're part of that team. Part of the concession stand manager said that they'll stock inventory. I'm just worried about what kind of inventory will it be like food and candy and stuff? Because then that to me worries me about having possibilities of break-ins and damages. So if it's not, you know, that's great, but there's, then know a communication about this to the public. Or we had one meeting that was adjourned, that we were supposed to have another meeting. So no one really knows what the stock or inventory is that will be part of the duties until tonight. But up until this point, no, nothing's been clear. Again, and I'm also against the seventy five thousand dollars of the taxpayers' budget to go for the facility to put in the storage. Again, this is exactly what we told them we wouldn't be paying for. We said that fundraising and donations would pay for ticket booths, storage, bathrooms, and the concession stand. Any outbuildings were not covered. So here in the budget, seventy five thousand dollars for the athletics again. We're talking about doing, we have, where can we spend a hundred thousand? I'm sure if a music parent got up here, I'm sure they could come up with seventy five thousand dollars they could spend on the theater or, you know, they just had a great play that was attended by many people from outside the community. I'm sure we could come up with something or a different group or, we did a lot of work on science labs and now we can't build one for seventy five, but can we update some traps or some chemical storage or something like that? For, let's see, the money's spent other places besides athletics. And I know it kills me to have to say it, but I believe that to be true. And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Hi, I'm Tracy Farrell. I just had a question. Back in the fall, I believe it was actually on Halloween, the FDR Boys and Girls Varsity Cross Country Team had, and actually the JV Team had won the Mahal Champions, Championships this year. As of yet, I'm positive that there hasn't been any recognition on the board at the FDR Gym to recognize those kids for their performance. So I'm wondering if it's typical to be out six months without being recognized. The biggest issue, I guess, for me is that this is the first time that the cross country team would be honored in that way for the district. So I just wanted to see if you had an answer for that. Thank you.
Now, I have a motion to exit.
So move, second.
Any discussion or favor? I'll start, I guess. The recognition plaques take forever. They take forever. I don't know why, but they add in the path. Even team pictures need to take forever to get up there, but could it be no better? Absolutely. And I'm going to take a stab at being the bad guy, which I don't like to do, but I'm going to do it anyway. About the track facility and what it means to the district and how it gets managed. And I understand that people agreed to pay for it. But what, once it's built as part of the district structure, it's like a building. If you bond the building, it's going to need maintenance. It's normal that there's going to be other expenses. You cannot, if you told them that that would be it, then you told them wrong. I don't know, but it just, it just seems to me that once it's part of the district, it's run by the district and we pay people to do that. So that's, I'm going to comment on that. So I'll now shut up.
I just wanted to comment on the storage sheds. Right now, we're renting the storage sheds. So to purchase storage sheds would be the elimination of renting sheds. So they would pay for themselves over time. We don't think it's cost effective to rent the storage, so we're purchasing them.
And if I recall, it was really about protecting investment significant equipment that we walk for the track. Track and field equipment that is, you know, the ability to put that stuff under cover during the winter and keep it out of the weather, so.
Yeah, and my understanding, Elliot, you may have the instance, the, prior to the renovation of the athletic facility, a lot of equipment was being stored underneath the stands in what turned out to be not an acceptable solution at this time with the current facility. So that generated the need to protect the equipment that we purchased in some other way. You couldn't add it to the building, add it to the back by putting walls up around the back of the stands to create an enclosure that would protect it. That, that's not a workable solution according to the state regulations, so you needed to do something else. So that's, I'm not sure where in the planning that went astray or something like, but I think that turned out to be an uh-oh at the end. It wasn't, we weren't trying to mislead anybody or anything like that. It's just something that, you know, you know, whatever you can be sure of with the state is, if you figure out where it's at, that's a clue that the next day they're going to move it. So that created that issue. I'll put in something else. Oh, the recognitions on the, on the school plaques and stuff like that. I totally support the fact that, you know, for you, let's see, I probably, since nineteen seventy two or seventy three, I've been in that gym and sometime after that, the current level of plaques will put up or the banners or whatever you want to call them for the athletic team like there and it's, it's all, I'm a former track runner from the city and it just bothers me to see that up there year after year after year with nothing on it and knowing what was holding them back. So, yeah, but right now they're looking at what, do they want to continue with the situation they're in? At one point, they had a special printing device which would print up the banners that they added to it. I'm not sure that that's still available. They're looking at whether they want to go with a different setup so that you can order the panels to be created by somebody else and just add it on. And I don't think it's a simple solution. I go to a lot of gyms throughout the year and if you go through those buildings, I can honestly swear that if you went into ten buildings, you'd find nine different solutions to what they're doing there. So that's, that's an issue, but it has taken a long time. Now, I believe that the, I'm not sure what the timeframe is from the time you win a Mahal championship till you finally get the plaque. I know they, they have one there, you hold up when you get there, but I'm sure that's given back to get inscribed and put all the information on you. You want to recognize a team, identify what the team was, but it does take a long time. And in the past, it's usually gone like three years and then they upgraded to all of them at times. It's the same thing, but. If you want to say to anybody else, Mr. Duffy doesn't like it, you can, because I don't like it.
I just wanted to thank Denise for giving feedback on the Washington DC trip. We broke a lot of protocol and procedure because we realized the uniqueness of the opportunity to have our students face to face with the Director of Homeland Security. I also want to acknowledge Deb Rosen, who in order to break those, not that we broke any physical rules.
But if you're looking for some.
The, the, the short advance notice to go on such a trip. The, the, the short advance notice to go on such a trip and the complexity of all the rules we have to follow to make that trip happen. Deb spent an enormous amount of time to make sure that the students were able to get transported there, housed there, fed there. And so I'd like to thank Debbie because, and it was very complicated. She worked very hard. There were a lot of changes. And it's not something that, you know, we hope comes up a lot because you, you had no idea what the, the best, so it's so good to hear that it was really worthwhile. And we, we have heard some feedback, but we hear publicly, we were really thrilled that the students had this opportunity and appreciated the uniqueness of it. The last time we had something last minute was the phone call that we could go see Madeline Albright on the second day of school. But it was across the street. It was at the Wachla Center. So certainly easier to manage than an overnight trip to Washington DC. But thank you so much for sharing what it was like for the students. We really appreciate it.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could get the students to stop by one day at a meeting and share with us their experience?
I just said that to Rick Party today because he was the one who, who shared that with me. So I didn't, I didn't wanna say anything, but I have asked the question, can we get the students to come and, and share? That would be great.
Come on, students, line.
They would love that.
I think it was about 16 students, 14, 15?
10.
Okay. We can definitely ask them if they brought them come.
I remember when they used to come in before, how, they, they used to produce the video, was it, Ken?
Yeah.
Medical studies, they used to bring it here a couple of times. They showed it in school a couple of times. And I think they had to use the, the movie theater up in Reinbeck, wasn't it?
Yeah, they still do that.
The upstate?
Any other comment?
Yeah, just one, interesting point about the varsity club that mean, does that really happen where one club has to raise money to turn over to another one? I mean.
I was unaware of that, so we would wanna make sure that that doesn't happen.
I know that the upcoming event is being shared by two different groups.
Yeah, I can see a share, that's something they can work out.
Varsity Club doing a two-hour slot and then the rest of it, you know, somebody else is doing part of it.
And there must be a calendar, there's gotta be a calendar somewhere.
Yeah, and you know, and I just wanted to speak to, there's no calendar, there's, we're developing the management system now. It's not that there wasn't a calendar, there was nothing to calendar before.
Yeah.
So, and part of what we realized in the creation of a concession stand manager was, you know, that would be the point person for that, that calendar.
Yeah.
Prior to having an athletic stadium, there was no concession stand open, so there was no calendar to put events on. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be a facilities use process.
Use the Bush to watch out.
Yeah.
We have the, we have our athletic calendar, but, and we tried to put every scrimmage that we know about, but sometimes athletic teams put together something last minute. We don't wanna limit that either. So what, we have our athletic calendar. And then with the creation of the concession stand manager, we'll have a calendar of when the concession stands available to run.
Available, yep.
And, you know, we'll take it from there. So it's, it's, we're creating, we're, we're starting something new. It's not lack of having something, we're creating it now.
Do we have an estimate on the total amount of funds raised through the concession stand?
Since we've, since it's.
A projected revenue per year?
I, I can get that, I, I can get that, yeah. And by concession, you mean, you know, the, look. I do have, like, for example, we only have one year a day. I, I have, for example, how much the senior class made on football games for the last five years. And there's a huge difference between pre and post athletic facility. And of course, it's also weather dependent. If it's cold and rainy on a, on a, on a football game, you can open up the concession stand and have a million hot dogs and they might not sell, because people might not come out. But we do, I know that, for example, we do have a five-year history of football concession.
Well, what I'm wondering is, we've got, what, $4,500 in the budget for a manager that we've been discussing here. How much, how much throughput are we talking about? And if we're talking about the fact that total concessions raised or total funds raised through the concession stand is $3,000, then, well, I don't have any idea of the numbers we're talking about. So I'd like to understand, I'd like to be able to have a, you know, a percent of the concession stand that we're spending on the manager. To make sure that the, the finances we're talking about justify that.
Well, and, and just, you know, and I, I agree with what you're, what you're implying, but let's just, to be clear for the public, especially those watching TV that may not be aware, we don't see the money on the income stream. It's booster clubs and it's student groups.
Right.
The school district doesn't. So, I mean, I, I agree with your point, but just, just to be clear to everybody, because they may not understand what you're saying. You might go, yeah, that's right, I know. How much money is the school district making on it? We're not making anything on it.
Yeah.
I know.
So just, you know, yeah, I, I understand it, but I wanna make sure everybody else understands.
Sure.
So as a point of reference, senior class for a couple of football games, like, say, three football games, it's, it's about $2,000.
For how many football games?
For approximately like, three football games, it could be somewhere around $2,000 approximately.
All right, so an estimate sitting here now is roughly $700 per, per session.
And of course, we'll, we'll, Kevin, who runs the concession stand once a year up in August up in Reinbeck, would like to know is that net or gross? You got a lot of bills to pay, you know?
Right, yeah, that I don't know.
Okay, just, that's the question I asked too.
That's a good one.
You wanna know what the net is, the gross per, because you gotta pay for the product you're selling, so what's the net? That's what, you know, that's what you really wanna know.
But the other side of, the other side of the revenue stream is generated there is that those events that have admission charges and that amount does come through the general fund.
Right.
All the gate proceeds go through general.
Sure. I think the other, the other statement I would have in reference to the storage facilities is that, my understanding that we needed storage facilities immediately for the athletic materials and that it would have been detrimental to the condition if we left them out in the weather.
Oh, yeah.
Having said that, I'm sure that the district would gladly accept the donations to reimburse us for the purchase of the building. So it, there's no reason to, to say that we've broken promises or, or we've invalidated your promises by, by getting the buildings. But I think we are meeting our obligations to take care of the materials that have been entrusted to us.
We're good? Okay. Do we have a?
Go ahead. Yeah, the instructional team for the district leadership team met yesterday. We reviewed the latest, almost 45-page document that Jonathan left us with that he had made some edits on based on the larger group. We basically put together the implementation plan for year one. We reviewed the PowerPoint. One of the things we asked Jonathan, our consultant after the last meeting was, it's great to have a 45-page document that leaves a legacy of the work that's been done, but, you know, we need to put it into a visual, we need to get ready for a board presentation. So he put one together and we reviewed the PowerPoint. And the whole team meets on April 19th. And at that meeting, they'll look at some of the edits to the full plan, look at the PowerPoint, give us some feedback on, the whole team will put together the finalized PowerPoint and plan for the board presentation. So we were really happy because of the last district leadership team, it's like, wow, we have this great concept and this master strategies, four master strategies that if we follow over five years will get us to, you know, the anticipated state of where we wanna be. But a master strategies list isn't an implementation plan. So we're really sure that we can share with the larger team what it will look like to implement the first goal in the master strategies list and be able to present that to the larger group and then gear up for the board presentation, which will be in May sometime.
Did you send the note out to us, the team, for the April 19th yet?
No, but we will, we'll, we'll probably wait a week to.
No, we should give a heads up to people if there's calendars. And make sure the calendars are free, so we should send the note out as soon as possible.
Okay, 'cause everybody got that date, but we can send out a reminder.
Yeah.
Again, yeah, we'll definitely send, yeah, 'cause. Yeah, 6:30 on the 19th, but we can send, send another one out and then send a reminder. You, you generally like to send a second one the couple days before, so. You don't have that on yet?
No.
All right, we'll definitely get it out, 'cause if you don't have it, then there might be others too. Great.
Okay. I don't believe that I unfinished business.
Actually, I, I have something.
Oh?
Only because it's been an ongoing conversation. And if we went too late in the meeting, people have given up on TV or even in the room. So just as a reminder, I am not running for reelections of Deb. What is the status of, I know we can't, we don't say who, but how many positions are out right now?
And, and Kevin, I believe there's someone possibly picking one up tomorrow. So hopefully as of tomorrow morning, it'll be two.
Right, so just wanna make sure our three seats open. And so I am not running and it is important that, you know, I keep encouraging people to give it some thought. If they'd like to chat with me about it, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to take the time to speak with somebody about it, but, you know, I, I really, I'm really concerned about, you know, finding ourselves at the end of the school year, you know, with, you know, again, I always have my friend Jeff on the, on the, on the shoulder here because as we recall, he won by a write-in vote. And we were very fortunate that he's an excellent board member and a great guy. That can go south very quickly, you know, and shouldn't be left up to chance. And so I really do encourage people to give it some serious thought. And, you know, especially in light of that, there's at least one seat open guaranteed, you know, that, that, because Dan is in here, he will run again. But, I mean, you know, you, you didn't do that, right?
Not publicly, no.
Oh, sorry. Well, you went around, I signed your petition, I'm sorry, I thought it was out there.
It is now.
Sorry. He implied that he is, maybe he hasn't, I don't know, he'll find out. I signed.
At the time, I was seriously considering.
Not running, but running.
Oh, you mean, you haven't decided yet?
Oh, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, ooh, sorry. I, but I am not, and yeah, I'm really, I apologize, I did sign this petition, so. I, I, you know, just, it's very important. I mean, again, there's three seats. And so, okay, maybe there's three seats available, but it's, it's really important. It's a board of seven and, you know, so just wanted to get that out there.
And your seats are really important. I just wanna reconfirm since Kevin brought it up, I messed up on our last meeting and I won't pursue, be pursuing the city, I need, well, there is a risk to.
And then there was one.
And then there was one. Now you're really on the spot, sorry. We're really nice people, you know?
I better pursue that, getting a stadium seat for the chair.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I was gonna, you're quite correct, I was gonna bring out the board discussion, but it is way down at the bottom.
Yeah.
And then people will either lost it now, so if they're watching it in their living room, we're agreeing to hear, so I wanna get that out there really.
All right, at this time, can I have a motion to the consent agenda, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to, of these, of the two known people that are here, there's the personnel agenda is part of the consent agenda and Rebecca Lloyd is on the consent agenda as the Director of Human Resources. So I'd just like to introduce her before we take the vote, so welcome.
Thank you.
If they all say yes, you could stay, you know? Yeah. And then Rick Ward, who is certainly no stranger to us, is on the agenda to take over the Director of Technology position. And so we would like to acknowledge that he's in the audience to take on his new role. And I don't know, because Cora and Aviva aren't here, if there was anybody else in the audience that's on the agenda for appointment. We have a couple people that I might not have met, so I think we're good. So Rebecca, Rick, drum roll, please.
All those in favor? I have a motion for 11.2, the Five Level Agreement with the HPTA.
Second.
Any discussion, please?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption, adoption as presented to us by the Special Light Fund.
Thank you. All those in favor? May I have a motion for 11.2, the Five Level Agreement with the HPTA?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, to clarify for the tenant, this is for an upgrade in the curriculum writing hourly rate to bring it back into line with the effort that these people have put into, particularly adjusting to the Common Core and other things that need to be incorporated.
Okay, thank you. All of them favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. I have a motion for 11.3, which is a memorandum of understanding for the HPTA.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
This, this is the agreement for the concession stand and apparently that position is going to be part of the HPTA contract.
All in favor?
One question before we do. Do we need to fill this position if we approve this? In other words, should we decide against having a manager? By approving this, this agreement, are we required to fill it?
We're required board action to fill it, one of them.
Yeah, you'd have to appoint somebody, we plan on posting tomorrow.
So this just creates a position.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't allow for it to be filled without board approval.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't said that, just to ask this question. That is true, but I just wanted to, what position does that put us in? That if we say, ah, we're not gonna fill it, yet we're gonna plow ahead and run the thing and, you know, how come you haven't posted it? How come you haven't filled it and run the concession stand? This is just a plague devil's advocate, you know? You know, I guess what I'm saying is if you're not, if you're not, if there's any appetite to not fill the position, you know, or, or at least you're not sure yet if we don't wanna fill the position or some, you know, if I'm saying there is, we may have talked about it, but I would really rather probably not create the position until we knew that that's what we wanted to do.
Because we plan on posting tomorrow, interviewing, and then putting a recommendation on a board agenda.
But does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Not everybody has to vote in favor of the person, but, but as, from a management perspective, we're gonna move ahead, post, interview, and put a recommendation on the agenda. So I will be putting on the agenda a recommendation to fill the position and then the board can vote to approve that person or not approve that person. But what you're doing tonight is approving the authority to post and make a, yes. No, I know you do, yeah, I just wanted to make everybody.
Okay, right. But what my, my position is.
What it's gonna look like from here.
Right, and if somebody's thinking that, or if there's a collective majority, and I'm not saying there is, but if there's some thing, well, do we really need that? And are we going to do that? And it, so in other words, you know, voting against somebody, it's really not a statement against that individual as much as, you know, it doesn't matter who you put up, you know, we don't, we don't wanna fill that position. What position are we in with the bargaining unit when you say that, well, we're gonna go ahead and plow ahead and run the concession stand? And we said we, you know, we have this memorandum of understanding that created the position, but eh, we're not gonna fill the position. What, what does that, you know, it's kinda like saying, well, we're gonna run a football team, we're gonna run that on the coach, which I know is impossible, but I'm just saying that, you know what I mean? So that's. So that's what I'm getting at.
Well, let me ask the question, is there anybody else that has any doubt that this is the right direction?
I am, yeah. I don't know if I'm going to do that, I don't think I will.
Okay.
So...
I don't, I don't, I don't...
Don't we have listed stipends for clubs that no longer exist?
No, that's fine, though, because the clubs no longer exist, but I'm saying you're going to run it, you made an agreement with the union, you said, okay, we're going to have this position. And then, you know, the board, you know, for whatever reason, may decide that, ah, we're not going to fill that position, but yet, you're going to run the concession stand. Now, if you just said, nope, we're going to nail the door shut, and nothing's going to happen in that building, they can't say anything. But as soon as you, you know, the window flies open, and the doors open, and there's food being shoved over the counter, the union can come back and say, where's the position that you're supposed to have to run this thing? That's the problem. So, you know, so I'm, you know, I'm okay with, I'm okay with voting for it, but I'm just saying, if there's, if, 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 if there's discomfort, you know, people should, if there's discomfort with the idea of having a, having the position, now's the time to address that, not when it's time to appoint somebody, and then have it go down, and it had nothing to do with the individual that might have come forward. It was just the principle of having the thing. And then all of a sudden, they say, hey, okay, go ahead, you can use the concession stand, you know, and then you're going to have the union sitting there going, oh, hey, man, you agreed to create this position, and then you turned around and didn't fill it, and now you're running the concession stand. That's where you're going to get in trouble, that's all I'm saying. So, I mean, if you don't want to do it, that's, this is the time to make that vote now. If you, you know, are in favor of it, fine, but you know, if you're not in favor of it, it's, the time to do that is at this vote, not when you're going to appoint somebody. That, that's where I want to be very clear on people. Because, I mean, the question was asked, and it was a good question, and then, yeah, you're right, nobody can be appointed without a board approval. But the issue is, it's, at that point, it's not really about the person, although it could be, but it's probably not. It's really more principle of, well, do we really want to do this? And, like I said, if that's the question, whether you think we should be spending the money on that, that needs to be, you know, you don't want to have, I'm just saying, you don't want to create a position in the bargaining unit, and then turn around, like you said, and I know you can't do this legally, it was just a joke, but it's like saying, you know, I'm not appointing a football coach, but we're going to run a football team. You know, if you, if you let the concession stand function, and you've agreed with the union, because we all voted to create this position, they're going to come right back at you and say, hello, where's the person that's supposed to be running this thing?
Yeah, nor will it be unfair to think that another bargaining unit, such as the clerical unit, would take it on.
Right, right.
And someone, you know, so...
Yeah, so that, that's just a...
It can't become a secretary's work to manage this.
So that's just a question, you have to, you have to be aware of that, you know.
I don't think the administrators might want a stipend to run it, you know, it's part of the problem, this is a big management piece, so we're...
I'm sorry.
We can muddle along as is, and have people sell hot dogs on the side of the building, and that's fine too, but that's what we'll, that's what will happen, we will muddle along as we go forward.
And I'm not advocating either way, I just want people to be clear, because the question was asked, and I think that we're setting ourselves up for more of a problem doing that, and voting not to appoint somebody, and then letting business continue as normal, yet have this agreement being backed. I'd rather turn the agreement down and say, we're just not doing that, that way, than, than do it by that other method, that's where I'm coming from.
And by not having the position, it will necessarily default to what we have currently, which is...
Right.
Couple of people wanting to sell some hot dogs outside of it with no system in place.
No, and I understand that, I just, but just, you know, just be careful of what you buy here.
Yep.
Because, you know, you'll create labor problems down the road if you say, well, we'll create the position, but then we're not going to fill it, and we're going to let business continue as normal. That's not going to work, I promise you that.
So, I understand what occurred at this table, I've heard two negatives, is that correct? One dead, one...
One, yeah, I, I've been on the fence for this for quite a while, and I think the thing that finally made me consider voting against it, you know, I heard the arguments for it, and it didn't make sense to me, but if, if we got a rough estimate of $700 income to the group that's running concessions for a given day, who knows how accurate that number is, and I'm sure it varies greatly depending on the weather and the timing and so forth. But it's not a bad number, it seems to make sense. Then that means that we've got to run the concession stand six times in order to get close to the amount of money that goes through that building for the stipend. Now, a football game, or a football season, we've already discussed, is roughly four, four seats, four sessions. There's probably other opportunities, including soccer or other events in the fall itself, and then there's all spring as well. So, we're probably talking about, again, an estimate off the top of my head, somewhere around 30 to 40 opportunities to make money off of this. Pardon me, let me rephrase that to be clear, for our students to make money off of this. I don't like the idea of an additional stipend. I think we've got a long list of stipends already. However, I don't know how we take care of a facility like this without a stipend, a stipend, without someone assigned to take care of it as their job responsibilities.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am, when you got them, you know, they put the money into it, and it has the opportunity to be enhanced down the road, but somebody's got to be responsible for it.
Especially for...
Somebody does, and I just don't, right, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, they just don't, Elliot's got to have enough to do, you know, so...
I want to put one positive word on this, and that was when, when the committee, when the whole district decided that, you know, we weren't going to expend the funds to put a concession stand on, because we thought that might make or break the vote, we put a cement slab down. Never in my wildest dreams did I imagine the donations and the quality of that building. The fact that you had John Golden, V. electric, a couple of people putting blood, sweat, and tears across the flooring, you know. In my wildest dreams, I thought the cement slab may have a two-by-four shed, texture 111 siding, to keep people dry. I never, in my wildest dreams, anticipated that this community would get together and put in a fully electric, stone, aesthetically pleasing, state-of-the-art, ready-to-go, so that you could use it for storage or concession, because it was built as a potential storage, not concession, because we didn't put it in to the State Education Department as concession. The community came together and said, let's donate thousands of dollars in time and energy to build a beautiful facility. So we couldn't have anticipated that kind of a donation, nor could I look the people who gave us this money and donated this money and say, we're not going to spend any money to make sure that it's locked, that it's clean, that it's managed, so I guess, you know, this, this is a happy, unanticipated problem. What the public voted on was a cement storage slab. What we got was unbelievable. It just brings tears to your eyes to see that, when you could, when you see the detailing of the electrical work, the clock, you know, we didn't anticipate this, so we're, it's, here we are. So, and again, I, you know, whether we have a concession stand manager, don't have a concession stand manager, I just wanted to shed some light on where we started with a cement slab, and where we are today, and what's our due diligence to, I'm close to, I think it must have been about at least, geez, it's got to be way above $50,000 when you put time and labor and materials, and so, you know, how you want to take care of it is...
I would just say, Steve, I don't think you can measure the value of a manager by how much money, and we don't do it with anything else. And I think the value is in the care, and in the opening, closing, and what it values, but I just, you know, I can't... Anyway, I, I can say this, and at this time, there's no other discussion, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Bring this to 11.4. I have a motion for agreements for special education services, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? This list of, this list of services, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.5, authorization to execute documents, as noted in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Allows supernat to execute documents, but I think that's a, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.6, healthcare services.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask, is the little description as to what this is? I've looked through it, and what kind of services are we talking about?
Which one are you on, 11.5? 11.6. Yeah, it's healthcare providers. I don't know what Solient is, but it's healthcare providers. Oh, okay, that's the name of the organization. I don't have to repeat everything, so you can tell me.
Yeah. So they provide...
Itinerant services, I would imagine, for private placements.
Okay.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.7, which are the two main propositions for the budget, before qualified voters of the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? And a motion for 11.8, to establish a capital reserve fund, and to, well, it also involves another proposition, be placed on the ballot, Proposition 3, stand with my motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? And I have a motion for 11.9.
So moved.
Second.
That would be adoption, a revolution calling for the annual meeting of the district legal notice for budget, vote, and board.
So moved.
Is there a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Tom just...
Oh, yeah, 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 Tom, faster, Doug. Getting issue.
That's my bedtime. I have a motion for 11.10, the chemical hygiene point for the district.
Second.
Any discussion on that? I don't think we did this one before.
I don't think we've been doing this, this is, nah...
It's always this time of year?
No, it's, but it's something that, districts are catching up.
They're catching, oh, okay, right.
Before they get to...
I know we did it, but I just, I, oh, okay, okay, all right, fine.
And is the, yes, yeah.
And the other one, yeah. All right, all in favor?
We're ahead of districts on this one, by the way. When I grew it up at the county meeting, in the fort, I was the only one who even knew what was the requirement, so we're way out of house.
Well, there should have been another superintendent in the district that heard the area that knew about it.
You must have been out.
You've been engaging that before. We were, Red Oak was audited by Department of Labor.
Oh, you know what, they, they would, and they're contracting out?
Yes.
Yes, that was the other district that, yes, there was, yes. It was not at the first meeting.
We're the case study.
Okay. No, very different. This is a chemical, inventory of chemicals in the district, and response to spill.
All right, moving on to 11.11. I have a motion for the hazard communications program, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And here once again, may I have the motion to answer public questions, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any question on that? All in favor? Thank you. And might we just all speak to work?
Hi. Can I just ask for clarification with the Solient, what is it? The healthcare?
I don't have a need to hear, so I don't want to speak.
Looks like it's an agency that provides healthcare professional...
My, my, what I will say is I think it's itinerant health services, probably for our privately placed students, but don't quote me on that, we will get back to you. Oh, sorry, I thought, yeah, I'll definitely get back to you on that.
Come back.
Um, now that we're moving forward with the concession stand, I would like to point out a couple of things. Going forward, I, I am opposed to us having any kind of a stove or cooking utility within the walls of that concession stand, because it does then require the board of health to come and inspect on a regular basis. And this new position that's going to be held is going to be responsible, or I hope they're going to be responsible, for making sure that that appliance is in good working order, meaning that it's not going to have dead mice in it, that it's not going to have mouse activity in it, that it's always going to be clean upon people going in and using it. I mean, and for that reason, you know, that we're not going to have to go in there and constantly clean it or be afraid to use it. In addition, and I hope I'm wrong on this, but I have a picture on my phone of what I can only presume is being suggested to go into the concession stand, because it's a stove that I believe was donated, that's now currently sitting in the ticket booth at FDR, and I can't imagine why it would be there. It is, gladly, show this. It's not in any shape at all to be a donation that we should be receiving for the concession stand as a stove. So I'd be happy to show this to everybody, but this is what I'm afraid, even if this isn't the thing, this is what I'm afraid is going to happen to any kind of appliance. So I'd just like you all to keep that in mind, moving forward with the concession stand too. So if you'd like to see it, I can pass you my phone, or I can show it to you afterwards, or, is anybody even aware that this thing is in the ticket booth? It's incredibly bad.
It hasn't been officially opened.
I don't, but then, well, then my question is, why is it in our ticket booth? Yeah, yeah, just saying, I can't, I love to be wrong about this, because we don't want this. So, do you want it now, or should I show you after we...
I don't need to see it, we haven't even accepted it as a donation.
Okay.
Anyone else? I have a motion to accept public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Well, I'm going to bring up the board election.
Oh, just to make any comments on this? Can you make any closing comments on the public participation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It depends on some clarification on ticket booths, well, we have never accepted any ticket booths to the district either, so... We really, actually, district doesn't have a ticket booth.
ticket booths.
Yeah, the students built the ticket booth as a class project.
What, have we had, put that into our facilities?
No, it's not part of, it's not an official part of our facilities right now.
The only thing, I have a couple of comments, just.
And the stove inside the ticket booth was unauthorized to be put there.
I was just gonna say, apparently, it's been, yeah, been being used to store junk, unfortunately, so I guess we'll have to find out what happened there, but we have to, just stick at a couple of points, you know, you know, putting any cooking appliances in that building is gonna require state added rule, but it's not only, you know, you need a, an exhaust hood, an anseal system, and all that goes with it, so that's a way down the road project, and probably a far more complicated, and we're probably ready to take care of it, do right now. But just, just, you know, from the point of view of, you know, that's not what actually gets you a board of health inspection. Really, by, by rights, and that's part of why, you know, why I, I supported the idea of a concession stand manager, technically, if you're cooking, however you're cooking, and serving and selling food, you're supposed to have a temporary food service permit. So, that, and it doesn't matter whether you're doing it outside, inside, if you're selling to the public, that's what you have to have, so, it's not just putting a cooking equipment inside the building that gets you there. That, that was kind of one of the duties that was gonna be assigned to the individual, like, you know, so that, you know.
And, you know, I think that the, this appliance that's been left behind is, is a good example of why we want to have a concession stand manager, someone who's gonna be able to watch for this stuff, you know, because it, it very easily, this building could very easily become just a junk trap, graffiti, and, you know, just, it raises the bar on how the space is used and maintained, and what the expectations are, and there's someone who's accountable for it. You know, you'll never know how things got there, or why things happened, if there isn't somebody who's accountable for it, so, it, it would be, it would be a shame for the generous donations that we've had to put it there, not that have it properly used and maintained.
And I, I would say, today, other than this move, you know, it's been remarkably free of graffiti, junk, you know, garbage on, I'm actually very proud that the community and people that use this facility actually take care of it, and, you know, appreciate it, so.
Nature takes over after a while, though.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion, yeah, I was just moving on. Go on to other matters. We already talked about the board elections, any other? And board subcommittee reports. We did have a coffee meeting on Wednesday, where we discussed the use of recess detention, and how often, and if it's not bad, it's not bad, but it's a really good thing. And, I think that was. Any other, oh, the tech, anybody want to talk on, you want to do the tech? We had a tech committee meeting.
Sure, we broke, uh, broke up in our normal groups and edited policies, tech policies.
Yeah.
It was exciting and enthralling, and, you know, all of the other.
Well, it was interesting, well, the schools, uh, district have, have done, all the way from listing every single thing that could possibly go wrong with, you know, a, the use of a personal device, and others who just said, you know, you really gotta figure, it's like, it went from there, right?
It did drive a lot of interesting conversation about how the device has been maintained, maintained, and managed, and what if it's lost, broken, stolen, you know, uncharged, you know, what if it's taken home and used by someone other than the student, a lot of interesting ideas that are outside of the, the main thrust of, let's get one-on-one devices for our students.
The doggy.
All things we're going to access. So, and it was a very productive session, but unfortunately, we need about 10 or 11 more like it.
We only have until fall here. Any other subcommittee? Okay, move on to upcoming meetings. Oh, Friday, April 1st, 7:00 PM, is the first Ralph Barth Smith on retreat spring play presentation. Saturday, April 2nd, at 2:00 PM, the same play, spring plays, Boebach, Ralph Barth Smith, and David Ching. On April, Monday, April 11th, 6:30 PM, is the film discussion of like a policy, which we discussed earlier, all the time. Thursday, April 4th, 7:00 PM, is the board of education meeting here at the district.
We need to correct the date on those.
Yeah, 14.
14.
A 14, we, oh, just left the one I, a 14, thumbs up. Thank you, Matt, thank you, Dan. It's in the right order.
Yes.
And Monday, April 18th, at 5:00 PM, is the last date this course can accept tissue for school board standing. Oh, yeah, so we're now, April 18th, how many, how many signatures do we need to check?
Forty.
Thirty-seven.
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 Wow.
Thirty-seven.
Something.
Seems like when I, when I run, it's always eighty-seven.
Yeah.
All right. There is no need for another executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some vote.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you very much.